Good evening. It is six o'clock and this is the April 26th regularly scheduled city council, Dunwoody City Council meeting. I call this meeting to order unless there's any objections. Seeing none, thank you all for tuning into our hybrid council meeting. Councilman Hinnigan, can you lead us in the invocation and the pledge, please?
Please stand if you're able.
At this meeting, help us to make decisions which keep us faithful to our mission and reflect their values. Give us strength to hold to our purpose, a wisdom to guide us, and a keen perception to lead us. And above all, keep us charitable as we deliberate. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're at the public comment section of the meeting. Ginger, do you have anyone for public comment?
If you would like to speak in public comment, please raise your hand in the Zoom application at this time. I see no hands raised, ma'am.
Thank you. The consent agenda, which is just the minutes from our last meeting, anybody have any comments or concerns?
Move to approve.
To approve?
Second.
Moved by Pam, second by Jim. Any questions or comments? Seeing none. I call the question, all in favor signify by raising your hand. Sharon, that's unanimous.
Mayor, are you ready for me to go to the business side of?
I am, yes ma'am.
Okay. This is a second read of a text amendment, an ordinance amending chapter 27 of the City of Dunwoody Code of Ordinances by amending section 27-87 to adjust requirements for the PD Plan Development District.
All right. Hello, Mayor. Hello, Council. This is the second read for the text amendment to the Plan Development District. I'll focus my brief presentation on the changes that we have made to proposed materials since you have seen them last two weeks ago. And then we'll be ready for any additional questions that you may have. Two changes largely based on your discussion two weeks ago. First change is we were proposing now a two-tier minimum area requirement. So in lieu of what you had seen last time, which was limiting or allowing these PD district rezonings at an acre and a half. Now we would propose two different tiers and I'll get into, I'll get into how exactly this works in just a second. And then we have proposed the language regarding the Planning Commission deferrals, we have included this in your proposed ordinance at this point. So please do, when you consider the language, please take that in mind. And if you decide not to go for that, please just take it out of the proposed text. So this two-tier minimum land area requirement comes from the discussion from last week where we heard kind of an intent of sort of protecting the established neighborhoods in the City of Dunwoody, predominantly the single-family neighborhoods and potentially looking at a higher land area threshold here. And the proposal, what we're proposing to you today is to use the character areas out of the comprehensive plan that was approved last year. And the character areas is sort of the visioning document for what the city intends to become in the next 10 and 20 years. So it's a, it's a guiding policy document. So it's a, it's a, it's a good thing to tie the proposed zoning onto because it is the adopted vision for the future development in the City of Dunwoody. And the two tiers would apply, like the first tier would apply to the suburban neighborhood and the institutional campus character areas here, the minimum, the minimum area would remain exactly how it is today at the 200,000 square feet. For the other character areas, it would be reduced to 1.5 acres. And because it's easier to visualize it with a map, I have the map pulled up here. So the suburban neighborhood is our character area that includes most of the established neighborhoods in the city. That's your typical residential areas where the higher minimum area would apply. The institutional campus is right in the center of the city. That's that part of the city where the GSU perimeter campus is located and the Marcus Community Center. And we propose to include this for the following reason. When we did some analysis for, to see if the character areas would be a good fit for what we're proposing to do, what you all told us that you were interested in. We, we looked at, so the suburban character areas were like a shoe in, that's most of our neighborhoods. But then in the institutional and campus character area, they were sort of squeezed in the middle between the community center and, and the GSU perimeter campus, there are three subdivisions in there. That's what we're proposing to include this character area for the increased minimum area. There's a second location where this happens also, and that's down in the Georgetown area. There are, I think it's 11 houses that are part of the Georgetown character area. But we're proposing not to include the Georgetown area for the increased area because it is, they are a much smaller part of the larger character area. And, and there is the increased protection of, of the 1.5 acre requirement as opposed to the initial one acre. And then the second item that I had mentioned was the Planning Commission review. So in the current version that's before you, that is sort of tagged on to the end of the proposed code language. And this would allow the planning commission up to three, up to three deferrals as opposed to the current allowance, which is only up to one deferral. With this, I'll seize my presentation and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Who has questions? I'll start online if that's okay. Stacy, go ahead.
My only suggestion would be to have the residential being acres and not square feet. So it's comparable to the commercial. And so I would propose perhaps four acres for the residential and institutional character areas in lieu of 200,000 square feet.
Okay. Anybody have feedback on that from Stacy? John?
Stacy, why not five acres? What was the percentage? It was 4.1, I'm trying to remember.
It was 4.59. I honestly was kind of picturing the Roberts rezone we did, which was around that, which was kind of the catalyst to get this all started. I just felt like, I mean, that's where I landed. It was just very, for me, it was more getting off the 200,000 square feet because I had no idea what that was. I had to look it up.
Yeah, I looked it up as well. I went down instead of up.
I went down instead of up, thinking back to the Roberts rezone, yes.
Hi, Jim.
I just have a question on AV. Can we turn up our Zoom people? It's a little bit quiet in the council chambers. I'm hearing, seeing agreement.
Yeah.
Just crank up the volume of the Zoom people in council if at all possible. Thank you. And I'm okay.
Four or five.
Four or five. I defer to.
Whoever has the strongest opinions, I guess.
I do like where this is at generally though compared to last time.
Right. So does anybody, was that it for you? John, do you have other questions?
Yeah, I could.
Still.
Yes, I have questions regarding.
Speak louder, John, because we're having a hard, it's not just you, but we're having a little bit of a hard time hearing.
I have questions regarding the approval process. When I look at the slump or rezoning criteria for approval, there's a number of items and it has to be in compliance with the comp plan. But yet the plan development is going to have some difference from the comp plan. So if that's the case, I'm just trying to see when I'm going to be forced to vote on this. I'm going to be looking at those approvals and try to see how it matches up. And I don't have any staff, you know, language or approval on that aspect. Is it suitable for the adjacent properties? Is it reasonable economic use? The land that's in a, let's say it's in a residential area. So you're going to take eight homes and turn that into a planned development. I'm guessing it's going to be a single-family development. So it's already zoned for a single family. Why? It would still be available for reasonable economic use. So if that's the case, I can deny it under that case. I'm just trying to see the approval process based on the laws in which we have to deal with. Is there any way staff can go through those approval criteria and discuss that, how it works for a planned development?
Go ahead, Paul.
Yeah, I could pull those up. So we didn't make any changes to the PD district requirements. And I wasn't there kind of for the last couple of times this went through for the State Farm. So I would have to, you know, give you sort of my initial reaction from just purely the text of it. Give me just a second to get those in front of me.
Again, the plan development to me was supposed to be a cooperation between the developer, the city, city staff, city council.
I think it still is.
Yeah.
Right. I just, I just want to make sure that.
And I don't think they changed the section you're talking about, right? Richard, is this section about approval?
They're requiring all those documents.
That's right.
In practice, like a sketch plan, like the, the, the circulation plan, like the street documentation, the parking analysis. Though in my mind, I mean, if I would sort of review these things, it gives us more in hand than, than the typical rezoning does. So we would certainly sort of, you know, use all of these for our analysis and in our staff reports. You know, we would have a broader section of items that we would bring to you in our analysis for, you know, the actual requirements. It is a legislative action, you know, just as other rezonings are. So these would be, you know, we're not having the same strictness as for the variants where you need to meet all the requirements per se. So I don't foresee.
But Paul, excuse me, isn't their variants part of this? So therefore shouldn't they have to meet all of them?
And it's, it's, there's relief, relief from other code sections part of it. But it's not, not a variance per se. So it doesn't follow that process. And it sort of rolls it into the legislative process that goes through you. It's the similar kind of how with the special land use permit that you see in the perimeter center. This like where the variants cut here, they don't apply the same way than they would for a variance case.
Yeah, just going through the approval criteria, I want to make sure that we are, that we council know what we're able to approve and not approve and why. And I want to make sure that this does not set us up for a lawsuit when we were to deny something for whatever reason. And that we haven't have unintended consequences based on our actions here tonight.
So, um, is Bill on the call? Because I don't see him on my screen.
Bill Riley's on there.
Yeah, okay. Bill, did you hear John's question? You're muted.
There, thank you. Brittany's telling me I'm muted. John, would you restate it one more time for me? I've been following discussion on this.
I have, Bill. Basically, I'm reading the requirements of the comp plan and the approval and disapproval criteria is the same as any other rezoning. As far as I can tell, it's the exact same. We haven't changed anything. And based on the first requirement, it basically says it has to be in compliance with the comp plan. But yet this document or this zone will be outside the comp plan and not be a section of it. So there's one reason I can deny it right there. If you take six houses, eight houses in a single-family district to rezone those eight houses, that area into more single-family, it would have been originally zoned for a single-family anyway. So therefore I can deny it based on the fact that the economic, reasonable economic use is already in place.
I don't, I don't think so. I, it would be like upzoning from a, from a lower residential to a higher residential where you can put more per acre on them. And that it's not a viable economic use for the one house per acre anymore.
So it's an upzoning. So by allowing the plan development, it's an automatic upzoning of the number of units per acre? Is that what you're saying?
Well, I don't know that it's an automatic, but I would envision it as a practical matter that it would be.
Okay.
If I could get on.
Hold on one second, Paul. And then the next one is, is that it's suitable for the adjacent landowners. So the adjacent landowners, and the upzoning aspect of it, it would have to not have a detrimental effect to them as well then, right?
I think that, I think that you would look at it the same way as you would upzone anything else to, between resident, between two different zonings that you would see them being as compatible. I don't know that you would automatically say, no, that you have, they have to have their approval. But I think is anything that you do, when you do those, those kinds of zonings, you look at compatibility, you put in, you put in buffers, you do other kinds of things that may ameliorate the, the effects of a more dense piece of property, but you do that all the time anyway.
Again, just look at this from a historical perspective where the plan development was for very large properties. I mean, entire apartment complexes that were going to be rezoned until multi-use development that's outside the normal plans of the community. And now we're, as I said, we're going down to a very small amount of land, almost to where it's spot zoned. So I'm trying to understand how this is going to work in the sense of adjacent landowners and the rules. And next thing you know, 10 years down the road, we're going to have planned developments every third house or every third plot. So I'm just trying to understand how it works.
Well, I think, I think that you're, I think you're right that you, you're going to have to put in measured responses to give them the kinds of flexibility to build more housing in there. But at the same time to protect some of the, the structural integrity. And that's what you've promised as part of this, this ordinance is you've promised the adjacent landowners that you will look to maintain some integrity of their property and, and that residential use. I don't think it's going to be a black and white on either one. But you have the capacity to ameliorate and you may, you may ameliorate more on the smaller plots than you are on the larger ones because they, they tend to be, would be more of a growth in the middle of a residential area rather than this big plan development that had a big piece of property that you could buffer all around. And you wouldn't have the kind of impacts that you would have on neighborhoods.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Nothing else, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Tom?
Yeah, I don't necessarily have any questions. I just have some of the same concerns that John has voiced as far as when, when, when something comes before us, if, what is the criteria that doesn't get us in trouble for turning it down? If we're not happy with the, with the product, that's my only concern at this point.
So if I may, because there seems to be some questions on that, since, since this isn't pressing, if we could get some clarification on that before we're asked to vote on it. So I think I would need a motion to defer it because it's a second read. But I think that's the best way to approach this with just one caveat, I may. Which is, is the purpose of this, we've taken all the single-family homes to where they are today in our PD ordinance. And so the reason to shrink the commercial sites down is to get some meaningful infill kind of commercial stuff. But I think we need to better understand the process and also the ability to reject if it gets that far from us. So if I could get a motion to defer, because I think I need one.
Motion to defer until our next meeting is two weeks in.
Is two weeks enough or do y'all need four? Richard?
We can do it in two weeks.
Two weeks is fine. Okay.
Move to the first meeting in May.
Okay.
Second.
Moved by Pam, second by Jim. Does anybody have any questions?
Madam Mayor, is there any other comments for, from?
Yeah, I was going to ask.
Sorry.
Yeah, I was going to ask that. Any other questions or comments? Go ahead, Joe. Sorry.
Yeah, for staff, if you could look at the other municipalities in Georgia that have PD zoning designations and, and, and see what they're doing. I know Gainesville has it, Augusta has it, Glenn County on the coast, they have them. They may provide further layers of granularity. I read the Gainesville one, they actually do a PD 123. And one is for residential, one's for, you know, et cetera. So they're further providing another layer of granularity on what that PD district represents. That may help the conversation as well because right now it's just a generic, it's, oh, it's a PD, but we don't know what goes in that box. So that's my conversation. Thanks.
Okay. Jim, anything? Pam? Tom, was that it? Stacy and John? Okay. All right. With that, I call the question, signify in favor of the deferral by raising your hands. Sharon, that's unanimous. Whenever you're ready for the next item.
The next item, excuse me, is an ordinance amending chapter 27 of the City of Dunwoody Code of Ordinances by amending article four, division four, to adjust the allowable fence and wall height.
Yep, and this one is second read too. We have made no changes after the first reads. So the language is exactly the same. I don't have, I don't want to repeat the presentation, but we're ready for any questions y'all may have.
Okay. If you don't mind, thank you. Anybody have questions?
I just have one for council. Did anyone go look at the backyard? Tom, we were going to, and. Don't want to put you on the spot.
No, I mean, I did look at it and I mean, I guess it comes down to personal taste and I don't live there, so I'll start with that. But I didn't see anything at that particular address that I would be opposed to personally. I mean, and I know the homeowner feels differently, but that was just my own personal opinion.
So I think the challenge with this particular situation is, is that even notice wouldn't have solved it. Like even if they had to notify unless we give them a path where the neighbors can say no. And so, or at least appeal or something. And by right, they could put eight feet in, correct? Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Correct. And is there any wiggle room for an appeal? If a neighbor has behaved badly? Like, for instance, for instance, with this, with this case that brought this forward was that neighbor said all along it would be a six and then it became an eight. So is there any recourse to that or it's just one of those bad neighbor, bad neighbor things?
Yeah, unfortunately, it's a bad neighbor thing. I mean, people lie all the time. But with the allowance for eight feet, anybody could do it in the rear yard.
All right. Yeah, yeah, sorry. Go ahead.
I just, I feel for the neighbor. I kind of sort of have a bar that if we're going to, there's this, why do anything? Why do a change? What's the big, what is the issue? And is it systemic? Is it citywide? Are there, is it numerous throughout and repetitive and so on? So I feel for this. I would have, on one hand, and then they're saying, okay, do we go ahead and add a layer of government to say every time we put in a fence, we have to apply for a permit and pay for a fee and have a notice and send an email to you know, and have a hearing? That's too much. That's the other side. And we're not an HOA, so you can't submit an HOA letter to get an approval on that one. So I empathize with the owner there. I really do. And I just, I feel like at this point in time, there's, if it was a citywide systemic and a lot of other people coming forward and it was really out there and we could really show a path, then I'd be more leaning to doing something. And that's kind of where I, where I am.
And I want to say that staff, Paul and Richard, thank you for looking into this for us. Thank you.
John or Stacy, do y'all have any questions or comments?
No comments.
Okay.
I just, I was not able to get over to Winter Hall to look at that one, but actually across the street for me, a neighbor has an eight-foot fence. And while I understand the perspective, I also understand the perspective of the property owner with the eight-foot fence. So it's, yeah, it's, yeah. Again, I don't want to fix a problem that doesn't exist.
Okay.
And I think I'm pretty much in the same place as Stacy and Joe and maybe, I don't know who else, but with what they've said. And, you know, I guess from my perspective, there's too many places I know of that have eight-foot fences where I think it's appropriate that I, I'm not, you know, I'm not inclined to make them non-complying going forward. You know, for the level of, you know, I, again, like Joe, I feel for this, you know, you know, this family and, you know, how they perceive their situation. But there's other situations where I think it's an appropriate thing. And I don't think there's, you know, I don't think it's so out of balance that we need to take action here.
And I, just to be clear, the problem with non-complying is, is that if they ever had to replace part of it or some of it or all of it, they would, they'd have to go through a process because it wouldn't be by right, just in case anyone's listening out there. So we need to take action on this item? Well, somebody, I don't know. It is an action item.
We do.
If someone makes a motion, nobody seconds it if fails.
Correct. So.
Or, so Bill, how do, how does this work? Sorry, you're not down here.
I'm sorry, Madam.
If no one makes a motion, do we just keep going?
It dies for lack of motion.
Okay, so is there a motion? I don't hear a motion, so this dies, correct, Bill?
Yes.
Okay. Sharon, did you get that?
I did, Mayor. I got it.
Can I read the next one? Sharon?
Yes, Mayor, you can or I can either way.
Okay, go ahead. You can.
Okay, the next item, item number five is consideration of an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Dorpley and the City of Dunwoody for regional vaccinations paid for.
for regional vaccinations paid for through CARES II funding. Bill Riley.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is an intergovernmental agreement, City of Dorville, where they're going to be the lead city on this. They're contracting with a contractor to find a site in Dorville and a site in Dunwoody for vaccine, vaccine distribution. This is to an outreach for Latino, Asian, and other immigrant communities. Part of this will be that they, they're going to recruit volunteers, they're going to do a media campaign. We're gonna have a video, we're gonna do translation, translation support, flyers, and there's supplies. It's not a very expensive piece, but what it's, it does is it gives us an opportunity to go out and do vaccinations in our communities that might otherwise be underserved. And I think our part is $28,500. And we will, we'll send that money over to Dorville. I'm sorry. Right? And we'll.
Twenty-seven-five.
Yeah. And we'll, and we'll send that to Dorville, and they'll make the payments.
Yes, they will. Any questions or comments? Joe?
Just to JF friends, make sure we have the accounting on that numbers and what accounts coming from, what the new balances are. I don't see it on the memo or in the agenda.
Mayor, I can answer that one. We're paying for it out of the city supplies and services out of the CARES II funding. Since it's kind of acting as a city operation, that's an eligible expense out of that.
Thank you.
Move to approve.
Move by John.
Second.
Second by Pam. It's a further discussion. Seeing none, I call the question signify your support by raising your hand. Sharon, that's unanimous, and thank you all. They did 306 vaccines this past Saturday. We'll try to do at least that many this Saturday.
Despite the rain.
Despite the really bad rain. And, and we appreciate our partners very much. Thank you.
The next item, item number six, is the Sustainability Plan presented by Nathan Sparks.
Hello, Council. Happy to be back with you on this topic. Good to see you again twice this month. Thank you for recognizing our sustainability heroes and supporting our recycling events coming forward. The, the materials that are provided are a follow-up on the March 8th meeting that we reviewed the first seven pages of this material. The last pages thereafter have been updated. Be happy to go through those first seven.
Bill, you need to mute, I think. Okay.
Would you like for me to share my screen?
If you'd like to share your screen, you can.
I will. I'll share one of them. Of course, that modified some things. Hopefully, you're seeing the page with our new sustainable sustainability plan proposal, where we outline the goals and objectives and the five pillars. Again, this was what you saw back in March. The idea here is to create a new short-term work plan that would move us towards the Atlanta Regional Commission's Green Communities Vision. One that would take us towards the platinum level. We're at the gold level currently. We want to work routinely between the committee and the staff to approach additional action items that would lead us towards this platinum level, but there's not a timeline specified to achieve that. And the priorities will also be worked kind of year over year, so I have more to explain on that. We currently have, again, achieved the gold level. We'll need to file again with the Atlanta Regional Commission within the next few years, every four years it's required. So once we achieve, we have to maintain, is the main point. We're doing well comparably to other cities in the Atlanta region. This is not a comprehensive view, but it has a link if you'd like to go see it. Again, City of Dunwoody is right here at the gold level. There are three as of the end of 2019 that were at platinum. A lot of this was created when the city was founded with our policies. Those policies are still on the website and visible to the community, and it's a matter of continuing to look at those policies and comply with them as we take action. And again, the recommendation that the committee has for you and was included in the packet is that there's a a new plan that articulates alignment with the Atlanta Regional Commission Green Communities program pretty comprehensively. There's only a few things that we didn't pursue. And again, it's not time-bound. We would like for this plan to sit within the comprehensive plan. So a long-range vision, and that we kind of work this with additions and enhancements to the action that we're already achieving for the majority part today. And that the staff would work with the committee on a routine basis to prioritize these items and take them forward in a, an annual budgeting act, action, as has been the case. And those budgets would, of course, come for counsel for approval in funding any additional funds. A good portion of this wouldn't require any additional funds based upon staff review. And here, this coming month, in our next meeting, Richard McLeod has asked Brent Walker to come in and talk to us specifically about the Parks and Recreation Plan. Some feedback he's already provided are within the framework document, where we would work within the framework to, to work with each department head and decide, you know, what's already kind of in their run rate, what's their, their ongoing improvement objectives? And then, you know, if there's any additional funds needed, bring those, those things to council. So as we think about, you know, here we are in April, May, June, get to the mid-year, look at what would be required for 2022. So we'll, as a committee, perform the oversight function and read out to the council once a year, bringing forth those, those priorities. And again, this next few pages are just lists of things that we, we can maintain in terms of trees and green space, and some areas that we could enhance, such as a residential tree policy, if that was an ordinance that the council would, would like to take a look at as an example. Certainly not prepared tonight to go through this in detail. Of course, would be happy to, we're gonna have a three-hour session in May, on May 12th. So we'll have extra time to spend time with Brent Walker, and if any members of council would like to provide input for us for that meeting, we'd appreciate that. But again, the, the recommendation is to take this annually, a year at a time, and decide where to focus additional actions. Happy to field any questions at this time.
Thank you, Nathan, for your, you and your commission's work. We appreciate it. I will start seeing if there's any questions or comments. I'm gonna start with Stacy.
Nathan, thank you again for this. Just kind of a, a general question, you know, since you're the new chair of the Sustainability Commission, what, what are you excited about with this plan? Like what, is there anything that you can point to that's different and new, and you're excited to see in there and, and get your teeth into?
Well, I do like the idea of having a residential tree ordinance. That affected me personally. I'm also very excited about the ideas of the safe route to school and the connectivity that we can create between our neighborhoods. You know, we'll have additional development at the old Shalaford site. And I could think nothing better than having a place to walk more quickly to Georgetown from the, the neighborhood that Letch High live. I think that there's a lot of energy within the, the committee for that type of activity. We're also very interested in improving our commitment to recycling. We're glad that we're doing that at City Hall. We want to do that in our parks. We also want to encourage special events to, to pursue that and have a checklist. So when we, you know, make special events possible and city property that the organizers coordinate a recycling event, and this coming weekend, May 1st, there'll be a VFW fundraiser in Dunwoody Village. And the scout troops that I helped lead will be there to help with recycling. So as an example, so those are areas that are of interest, Miss Harris.
And then, one more question. I think, am I still? As we are working on kind of a parks and public works, you know, prioritization and whatever and whatnot for the next few years, is there anything that you can put in the back of our minds to keep in mind for the 2022 budget and, and 2023 budget in the near future? Just as we make our own priorities, is there anything that you think we should be keeping in the back, back of our minds, really?
You know, I, I'm not prepared to give you a list. Our committee is still working to establish its collective priorities.
Okay.
So I don't, so my prior remarks were more from a personal standpoint, but we do want to do the work of refining those things in May, and we'll, we'll commit to giving you a list of what we feel to be the most important areas for you to focus on in the front of your mind.
And then I guess this is a question to staff. And, you know, as we put together our priority list, and then we have our staff retreat, are we gonna have this sustainability priority list so we can blend it with everything we're doing?
Yes, the reason we're pushing to bring Brent and Michael Smith and myself in now is so we could add it to the budget for next year, so.
Okay. Perfect, so that when we get to it, oh, okay, great. Thank you. Look forward to getting this done.
Thank you.
Thank you. John, do you have anything?
Nathan, thank you for the great work of you and your committee. One of the items that your commission is really tasked with is you've helped create policies and procedures when it comes to sustainability. And you're also sort of the watchdog to help us, City Council and other citizens, that the city itself is in compliance with those policies that were put in place previously. Is there any audit or audit program or philosophy of your committee for reviewing those policies and procedures and trying to question staff to make sure that we, as a city, are hitting our benchmarks?
We want to take an active role with the staff, at least annually, to walk through the initiatives and the expectations of the Sustainability Plan, which, of course, are grounded in some of the policies that may extend beyond formal policies. So that interaction is the new kind of move by the committee to, to perform this. We do have some members of the committee that recalled that years ago, there was a formal audit that was done. And there are other, there are members of the committee that believe that we should have an additional consultant, if you will, or a independent auditor to, to guide us in terms of our sustainability objectives. But at the moment, given, I guess, the realities of the past couple of years, the committee is, is interested in working the framework routinely with the department heads and do as you're suggesting, Mr. Hannigan, to review policy and review action by those staff members and bring any exceptions or hopefully compliments before council.
All right, yeah, thank you. That'd be great if you were able to assist with that. There was a screen, something on the screen a minute ago about no net loss of trees. So just my question is, how many trees do we have in the tree bank to be planted in order to make sure that we are hitting our metrics? It's those types of things, just as, and I look at what policies we have. What is the city hitting the metrics? And it's always those types of questions that I internally want to try to make sure that decision is being implemented. Richard, maybe you're on the screen, maybe.
Yeah, we actually annually update the tree, no net loss of trees. We hear it from Michael Smith, he works with the arborist. Literally the, the size and type of tree taken down, and Brett works with Trees Atlanta, and we put more trees in. So there's a spreadsheet that we have, and we can make that available to anyone.
Well, I'm glad you have that. It's just a matter of, it's just, that's just one of many examples of past policies trying to make sure that we are hitting our metrics in the sense of ongoing implementation. So thank you.
Yeah.
Is that it? John, are you done? Okay. Tom?
Um, yeah, no, I just, Nathan, thanks for the presentation. I really don't have any questions at this time.
Jim?
So, you know, in general, I like this document. Thanks for all the work you've done, Nathan. You know, I, you know, some of these things are near and dear to my heart, and some of you may know, I, I kind of made Dunwoody Safe for Hobby Beekeeping when the, when, when staff, which was all prior staff, none of the folks involved from the top level down were, that were making it unsafe for here anymore, and you can ask Alan Mothner or Cindy Hodges about that, but I, I made Dunwoody Safe for Hobby Beekeeping. I've been doing irrigation with captured rainwater for a decade now at my house. With that said, there are some, there, there are a few too many wills in this document for me to be comfortable with it from the standpoint of, you know, a practicality standpoint in a few areas, you know, and so, let's hang on, I was scrolling back, now I'm scrolling back. The key, key sections that I've got are, you know, we, we say the city will use captured rainwater or reuse water to irrigate landscapes at government facilities. Well, that implies you, you can't do straight irrigation. Well, I, I don't think that's practical at this point in time. I think it's a goal to strive for, but I don't think it's, it, you know, it's practical in the here and now to, to only use captured rainwater or reuse water to irrigate landscapes. So if we go to.
If I may, the, the, the intention is to demonstrate a commitment towards that and to, to take action as we're able to, to build, build out new facilities. So I think there's
And I'm good with that as an intention, but, but I look at the language in the document, and there are, it's sprinkled through with a lot of, you know, wills, primarily a few shalls, and, and that has implications where, you know, you know, it says you will do it. And, and I guess, you know, that's what's given me heartburn, Nathan. You know, if we, if we switched a few of these wills to, you know, will consider, you know, will strive, you know, from just flat will, I'd be a lot more comfortable with the document. But, you know, that, that one in particular is one. There's another one where it says we're gonna use, you know, ultra, you know, city facilities will use ultra-efficient plumbing fixtures. Well, I'm here to tell you as someone who's, you know, been a, you know, has stamped plumbing drawings, you know, and dealt with commercial construction, we may not want the most highly efficient fixtures in some locations, you know, for instance, like some of our parks, because, you know, from a maintenance standpoint, it may be that that causes, you know, over time, you end up with lines getting clogged up because there's just not enough water flowing to, to move waste downstream. That, that, you know, that has been a problem with some of these ultra-high-efficiency fixtures, you know, is the history. You know, I'm, you know, the airless urinals work pretty well, or the waterless urinals work pretty well, but the, you know, the ultra-high-efficiency toilets are, they're, you know, they're quite frankly problematic. See, there was another item in here for a one. But I, I, I guess that's, you know, there's about four or five locations where I, I'd like to see a will consider. And I guess that, you know, and I, you know, the, the other issue is, you know, just cost on all of this, but I think cost is more, you know, that's part of the conversation between staff and council when it comes time for implementation on some of these things, you know, like the high efficiency vehicles. You know, what, you know, one person's high efficiency vehicle is, you know, another's, well, that's too efficient and because it costs, you know, two X what the standard vehicle might cost, and that could be problematic. But, you know, in general, I think the hybrids have served us well.
So you, anything else?
No, that's.
Okay, that's, I'm, we'll come back to yours in a second. Go ahead, Pam.
Yeah, along the lines that Jim was going down to, there was another part that jumped out at me where it said, we'll shall, um, you know, be in the budget, the financials, but there's no numbers. And I understand that there can't be like real solid numbers right now, but will be in the budget. Well, like we knew from this past year and we put it back, yay, because it cares money, but we had to, because of budget constraints and cuts, we had to take the recycling out. So when it says, you know, shall and will, as far as budgeting, I, as much as I want everything in the budget as we possibly can, reality says sometimes things have to be cut. So that's another real shell part.
Joe?
Hey, um, so I got a few different, but from the verbiage, taking the will and shall, I'll just take it, for example, if you want to just keep it simple instead of having that. So take, for instance, the one that says watershed protection or says two. And then there's A, it says Dunwoody will support and encourage the enhancement of healthy watershed. Well, I think that's, that's a reasonable comment. And then the rest of number one, two, three, you could just actually have remove the three words to begin each sentence potentially, the city will, just get rid of that. And then it's like bullet points, if I strive, demonstrate, you know, those kinds of things. So if you want to take a tweak at that and, and, and just do that wordsmith one more round and, and have, well, that, that's, yeah, okay. Whoever gets to do that, Nathan. But I do appreciate them finding a place, right? Quick. And, uh, and then, so it shouldn't be too long to do that. Um, but again, I do thank you all. Um, you guys are worth your weight in gold. I, I, what was your hourly rate? Yeah, I'm messing with you, but it's, it's wonderful, right? Um, that you guys are doing that. Here's what I go back to. Yeah, like, like Tom mentioned last time, it was, um, like three of us former on the sustainability committee, commission, et cetera. I will say that I, I really like number one, adding the, uh, check-ins once a year with the department heads. Okay, that's really great, because otherwise things can get left to the wayside, have a check-in, et cetera, et cetera, and, and have a little, not to say you're coming there to do an audit, but have that check-in and, and report back to us, um, what's going on if we need to know anything. Um, I really appreciate that auditing. I have a specific question more for staff, I guess, than just to the council about, you mentioned the special event recycling. I remember when I was on the committee commission that we had asked for just change the permit, if it could just be staff without council involved to encourage or condone or a point system. I remember one time of so many different initiatives of having a point system to give you more of attaboy of if you were to encourage, encourage bicycle parking, you know, for those kinds of things. It's just whatever. Um, now people are going to place the, put your dog, right? We're going to bring in a portable dog, dog, dog kennel pool. But anyway, um, who, what's, is it, this is more for Richard, I think, than Nathan, but what would it take to ask for our permits for our special events? To, to give them an encouragement, especially the big ones, not just say, once we get back to the, um, food trucks, which is still a good, good thing. Um, is I, I more, this is the thing more for, more for Richard, I guess, on that specific one.
So first, I'll use the recycling. We have that on there that they have to provide recycling. However, you have to have someone there all the time because people throw away anything in any trash can. And it just, the flow of waste gets all mixed up. So somebody has to go through the garbage and sort it out. And typically those people aren't going to volunteer that, their staffs to do that.
Maybe we have a conversation with Michael Cohen, formerly of the DNC that, that did some successful ones. But they were there, right there monitoring all that stuff. Um, I know it takes a little bit of work, but
Yeah.
Love to see what we could.
Yeah, I, I was specifically referring to him because he brought that up. And he, he said it was, I can't remember, they had 21 bags of garbage and he had to go through the entire lot of them and separate it out.
Yeah.
Maybe there's models out there of public recycling that someone could find and figure out how to implement it. I mean, we're in 2021, people should have an understanding of recycling versus not recycling or the different kinds of boxes or whatever. We don't have to solve that tonight, but it seems like we're past the day of people not knowing. I know people are lazy.
And just a couple more things. Um, so we do have that staff representative that's working with the sustainability committee and that's a 15 hour a week per the agreement with the services, right? So do we have, this might be for Eric, it might be for Richard. Do we know on a monthly basis, do we know if we're, we're working on certain things that that staff person is, is working on? Do we get a, is that going to be incorporated in your CD manager report?
It, it can be. It, it falls in my department, so.
Right, we, we can certainly do that.
It's for significant things, not just dedicated housekeeping things, but you know, initiatives, things they're working on, you know, 90 days upcoming, um, things, whatever, and so on. So, okay. And remember, this is aspirational. That's, that was my word, right? Is there aspiration thing? So it's great to have an aspiration to aspire. So thank you all very much. Absolutely.
Anybody else? So Nathan, how do you feel about? To me, will is unfortunately sometimes aspirational too. But I think there's some discomfort up here with the wills. Do you think you could tweak the language in this and bring it back?
Would you?
Not all of them.
Right, it's not all of them.
It gets into, you know, prescribing certain things. I think that, you know, it needs to be more aspirational and, you know, in, in certain cases and maybe a lot of cases.
Right, or an asterisk with, you know, a staff sees fit or something, you know, something. I don't know how you feel, Tom, but just something along the lines of use the best toilet for the circumstances. You know, that kind of thing.
Given, given current technology, right?
Yes.
Three, five years is going to be different.
Right.
Yeah, there are some items, right, that we're already performing that may even be listed as wills. And I'm wondering if it would please the council if we kind of work that into maybe the first portion of the document to, to say in all circumstances, we will be reviewing the practicality of the plan and allocating budgets to Mr. Tomage's point. When budgets are, or when fiscal, we can achieve the goals, right? We're striving towards all of these as an evaluation to do that which is sustainable, which should be a lower long-term cost. But it doesn't, doesn't have a timeline and it's something we, we, you know, will want to do when the time and the, and the, the cost effectiveness can be implemented. That's the kind of intent. We don't want to rip out every toilet everywhere today and put in an ultra high efficiency toilet, for instance.
If we're building a new bathroom now, like a year from now, I think that there's a little concern about saying, if I'm not mistaken, saying this is the equipment we're going to use. And that's probably not even y'all's intention, intention, right? Nathan, your intention is to use the best for the environment for that scenario, correct?
Or for the pocketbook, right? To have a, a faucet in the bathroom that automatic and turns on or shuts off, or it's a press and it runs for 15 seconds, whatever it might be.
Right. So Jim, I can, you have more feedback? Right. Okay. If you want to wordsmith it some, that would be great. And, and bring it back. You get to see us again. Is two weeks enough or would four weeks, six weeks, whatever? You tell us how much time you need.
Well, I think a, a full month would be
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
We're going to meet on the 12th.
Okay.
Um, and we can do some of the work then. And then, um, we'll come back in, in four weeks.
Right. Right, perfect. Thank you.
And if any of the council could send me the, the sticking points.
Yeah.
Uh, I would appreciate that. So make sure we address it.
Right, I'll make sure that happens.
Thank you.
Anybody else before they go? No.
What, what time is that meeting, Nathan? On the 12th?
It's from seven 45 to about noon. Uh, or I should say 11. We're going to do three hours on the 12th. It's going to be a published meeting.
Anybody else? So I think I have to defer this because it's an action item.
Move to defer until the second meeting in May?
Okay.
Correct?
Second.
Move, move by Jim, second by Pam to defer the sustainability plan into the second meeting of May. Um, any other questions or discussion? Seeing none, I call the question, signify your support by raising your hand. Any opposed? I couldn't see Stacy. Okay. Stacy, are you opposed? Are you to deferral?
Yes, approve for deferral.
You approve for deferral. Sharon, that's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item there, number seven, is consideration and acceptance of a one-time donation from Dunwoody Senior Baseball for wind screens Linda Neighbors is presenting.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We have before you, um, the donation that Dunwoody Senior Baseball would like to make and it's for the wind screens to go around the Sadler and Crawford, um, baseball fields. They, we had three, three quotes on it and the one that seemed to be, uh, the best price and that staff recommends going with because of, uh, you know, their experience and their responsiveness is for Tommy Barber Sports. The donation would be $10,240.
Any questions or comments? Okay. Stacy and John, okay. All right, then, this is an action item. Oh, Jay is here. Do you have anything you'd like to add, Mr. Cap? I see in the back. Nope. Okay, you're good. You're here in case we have any questions. Apparently no one has any questions.
Move to approve.
Second.
Move by John, second by Joe. Any further discussions? Seeing none, I call the question. Please signify your support by raising your hands. Sharon, that's unanimous. Yes, and thank you very much Dunwoody Senior Baseball for providing this amenity to the fields. We appreciate it. Thank you.
The next item for consideration is number seven, consideration, I'm sorry, number eight, approval of contract for property and liability insurance, Linda Neighbors.
Yes, the next one is for your approval and, uh, staff is recommending the approval to go with Germa is a Georgia interlocal risk management agency. The prices are right there together and, um, our recommendation is for their experience, the customer service and the depth and legal representation that they offer to their clients. Uh, also very important in there is employee educational classes that Germa also will, um, provide. The total is $526,540 for the period May 1st, 2021 through April 31st, 2022.
Okay, um, any questions? I'll start with Stacy. John? Yeah, go ahead, John. You have to unmute. Sorry, your mouth was moving and you were muted, so.
Looking at the numbers, there's a possibility that we have a better option on the other one that we were looking at. I believe that we have experience with both. Can Steph explain to us if all things were being equal, we're picking one over the other for what reason? Is it for service?
It is, and also, um, the legal representation that Germa provides, you know, as part of their policy. And, and they do, uh, the customer service that we've received from them is, um, you know, paramount to the staff.
So basically we had a constituent comment that I forwarded up to Steph. I believe, Linda, you saw that.
Yes, sir.
What you're saying then is that cost alone and coverage alone is not the only reason that we are picking one over the other.
That's exactly right. The, the financial piece is definitely the piece that, the, uh, Mr. Williams brought out, and that was, that is correct. But when you look at the total service with the, um, prices and that kind of thing, uh, staff, we had a committee that actually evaluated it and, uh, felt like the Germa provided the best in all of the customer service as well as employee education and, uh, legal representation.
As far as pre-existing conditions, let's say, I don't know, something that's covered, let's say a car accident that happened, you know, a month ago. That would be completely then covered by travelers under the current system that we currently have, right? So I mean, we're switching to a new insurance agent, but the date of insurance will start with that new agency once we finalize and start the term.
Right, on May the first would be the new date.
Is there anything that's ongoing that's going to be troubling in the sense of a new agent versus an old agent?
We asked, uh, legal opinion and they did not feel that way.
Okay, so there's no issues with that aspect. Thank you. That's all I had.
Joe, do you have any question? No. Pam? Jim? Tom? Stacy, anything else? All right.
Move to approve.
Second.
Move by Jim, second by Joe. Um, any further discussion? Seeing none, uh, please signify your support by raising your hands. Sharon, that's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number nine is a resolution. I'll read the resolution into the record. A resolution to waive penalties and interest for payments for 2020 and 2021 occupational taxes and business licenses received after April 15, 2021.
Good evening, Council. I apologize that I did not put the, uh, written report in there. This is an extension of from 2020, extending it to 2021 until June 30th, which will take us through the second quarter, only waiving late payments and interest payments on those active business licenses.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions? Tom? Stacy? John? I want to thank you for bringing this to our attention. You know, our goal for the last 13 or 14 months has been to help is our businesses stay open for business. And so we appreciate you bringing this forward to us. I appreciate.
Yeah. Move to approve.
That was moved by Jim. That was moved by Jim.
Second.
Second by Pam. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I call the question, signify your support by raising your hand. Sharon, that's unanimous.
Thank you.
Now we're on to the discussion items. Mr. Thomas?
Yes. Can everybody see my screen?
Yes, sir.
All right. The following item is for approval or for review of a storm repair at 4833 Dunwoody Station Drive. Quickly, a little background information on this project. This is a little bit unique from the standard one, where this is actually the combination of two storm drain systems. Originally on the plat, stated in the late 70s, it showed it as two separate systems off of Dunwoody Station and Malopole Drive. At some point in time, either by the developer or the builder or the cab, we have no records to determine it. These two systems were combined. It was a junction box right here at the convergence of these four properties, and it was extended south to the end of this property line right here. So this is what it actually looks like in the field. These structures are a little bit more difficult than typical to evaluate. We typically evaluate all city-maintained infrastructure at a minimum once every five years, but because this is a solid slab top, we, you know, our inspectors weren't able to get it in there and actually evaluate it, and at this convergence, there were three failures. There is an invert failure right here to the, to the west. Same similar situation to the east, and then this pipe that was going out of the structure actually was partially collapsed, so the homeowner actually reported it to us after those heavy rains in August of last year. And we were able to uncover that structure and actually perform a full evaluation of the system, were able to determine what repairs were needed. So this is an example of some of the issues that we observed. These are the two pipes that were going into the structure. And this pipe right here is the one that was going out of the junction box where the pipe was actually partially collapsed. In addition to repairing these systems, restoring the invert and repairing the interior of the structure via cured and placed pipe, we're also going to stabilize the outlet of the system. The only reason why this, this head wall is actually still, still standing is the root systems underneath the structure because the invert of the pipe.
Carl, you said the root system is keeping it up?
Yes, the root system of the tree underneath the head wall is actually keeping this head wall standing because the water is pouring out the bottom of it, so there's really not a lot of soil underneath it. It's just standing up because you can see the roots underneath. I'm not sure if you can see it. I've got in mind, I can actually see the I'm not sure if you can actually see this underneath, but the roots.
Yeah, now I see it, now that you're pointing it out. Yes, right.
So we're going to, like I said, we're going to take this head wall off, we're going to have to stabilize this, add some soil underneath it, repair the invert, and then line this section of pipe as well. To summarize, the, the repair, it's going to be a little over 380 linear feet of cured and placed pipe. We're going to add a ring and cover to that solid junction box so that in future, when inspections are needed, there won't be any surprises. We'll be able to inspect it frequently a, as the city deems necessary. The section of collapsed pipe, we're going to do a point repair and replace 10 linear feet of that section. And of course, we're going to reset the outlet head wall, and odds are that tree is going to have to come out, so we're going to make that a judgment call based on how much of the root system further up the pipe needs to be cut through in order to stabilize the system. The estimated cost of the repair, we added a 20% contingency due to the condition of the pipe, we may need to extend some of the point repairs, is $60,819.90. And I'll open it up to any questions that you may have.
Thank you for the pipe and root presentation. Who has questions? I'll start. See if I have questions. Tom? Jim? Pam? Joe? Stacy?
Does the $60,000 include the tree removal?
No, no, but the contingency is more than enough to cover that if we have to take it out.
Okay. No more questions. Thank you.
John?
Well, the tree removal is in the right of way, or is it in the residence property?
It's, it's just downstream of this head wall. It's just to the, to the left of this head wall right here. That's where the roots are. That's where the tree is located.
Is it in the right of way, or is it in the residence property, or is it?
It's in the backyard.
Carl, all I'm thinking of is if we have to take down a residence tree, we might have some trees available on our tree bank to rent. This is what I'm coming at.
Okay. Yeah, so if, if, if we do have to, to take the tree down, it will be just one, and it is in the back, back of the residence property.
Fair and appropriate for the resident who's there. I mean, I understand, if it's in an easement, there's different legal aspects of it. I just wondered what the circumstances were. I know we're going to treat the resident fair, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Yep.
Carl? The homeowner is aware this work is coming?
Yes, yes, they, all, all four homeowners adjacent to the pipe system have already signed the temporary construction and permanent maintenance easement.
And this kind of, I don't know what to call it, situation, wouldn't happen in 2021 with new construction, would it? Like, we have everything in place to make sure that builders are doing things correctly?
It will be a lot less likely because typically the, the, the way the, the storm systems, the regulations for the storm systems that are installed now. Number one, if, if it were city-owned, city-owned infrastructure, we wouldn't have a solid top slab on the junction box, because we would have been able to identify these failures, you know, probably years ago if we had been able to access the structure. So, I mean, just that in itself is what allowed this situation to go a little bit further than it typically would, and we probably would have repaired it years ago if we had been able to access the structure.
All right, thank you, as always. Can this go on consent? So this can be on consent next time we see it, please.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carl, as always. And now we'll hear from Michael Smith about sidewalk.
Yes, the Mount Vernon Place sidewalk project, we're ready to construct that piece between Falkirk and the close to Mount Vernon Road. We were seeking a funding authorization under our unit price contract with Autico for $155,000 plus a, a contingency. Well, including the contingency, I'm sorry. We initially did a request for proposals for this project, just to test the market and see what kind of proposals we got. We, we received five, four qualified, or four proposals that met the minimum RFP requirements. After looking at those, the, the lowest cost proposal didn't really demonstrate a lot of experience as a prime contractor. A lot of their work was working for another, under another contractor. So, and then the ones that had a higher level of experience and qualification were, you know, a good bit more in price, so at that point is when we elected to look at, talk to our unit price contractor, and you can see that their cost estimate they provided is is more in line with what we would expect and within our budget, so we're recommending approval or funding authorization for Autico to complete this project.
Okay. Questions? I'll start with Joe.
Michael, I'll see your sidewalk and raise you a multi-use path. Let's, let's, can you just kind of give us an overview for the big-term picture of that area? I know we're going to do the intersection at Tilly Mill, Mount Vernon. And then we've got on a plan eventually, we do have a designated on Tilly Mill, a multi-use path. And then we got Mount Vernon, a multi-use path. How we get, what's the connection there on the multi-use path from Mount Vernon to Tilly Mill? Michael?
Well, I, I think it would just be, you know, Mount Vernon to Tilly Mill. We, we didn't have any plans for a path on Mount Vernon Place. If, if we wanted to make that kind of connection, there is a transmission line easement that runs parallel to Mount Vernon Place that would would maybe be a better option than trying to, to squeeze something in the right of way on Mount Vernon Place. We did design this one with a six-foot sidewalk. And this fills in a gap between Mount Vernon and Falkirk subdivision where there's already an existing sidewalk, and then eventually we'll do the section on the other side towards Tilly Mill.
Yeah, so again, yeah, thanks, thanks, Michael. And I like the idea about potentially going through the and no one's living there, it's not in anybody's back door, but cutting through the easement on the power line right through there for a multi-use path, right through that triangle, that, that just would be sweet. I'd like to see about connecting the rest of the sidewalk to get to Tilly Mill. If we, what, what is our time, what's the year targeted right now without doing any changes that Mount Vernon Place and Tilly Mill intersection, when is that scheduled right now?
It's not currently in our five-year capital plan. And that's, and that's why we are only doing the piece on the west side of Falkirk right now, because when you go east of Falkirk, some of that will be relocated as part of that intersection project, so. So it's, that project's been designed, it's ready to go to construction, but it's not currently in the five-year capital plan. The intersection project.
Yeah, and the scope of all of our intersections is not a huge, huge lift and effort, but again, that's about prioritization and where we fund it or when we do it. I just, I just love the idea of a connectivity there, some way, shape, or form, and anyway, thanks, thanks for the feedback, though, and thank you.
Pam? Jim?
Hi, Michael, thanks. So you and I talked about at the far east end of this, on the south side, there's that place where it doesn't drain right now. Are we going to be able to clean that up as part of this, or part of the repaving, or, or both?
Yes, we're aware of that, and I think you're talking about on the east end of Falkirk where the, the curb goes back in.
Right. Yeah, I'm not sure if it's at the, you know, if the, the root problem is at the east end of Falkirk, or just beyond that, on that first property, you know, the right of way in front of the next property, east of Falkirk, but it'd be nice to get that cleaned up sooner rather than later, I guess.
Yeah, I discussed that with David Ayers, and he's aware of it, and I, I need to get back with him, but I think he thought that if we just do a little bit of work to re-establish a ditch there, that that would help get the water off the road there.
Okay. Thank you.
Tom?
Yeah, no, no, no additional questions. My only concerns or questions would have been regarding the future projects and how this would fit into that, but I think you've already answered that, so thank you, Michael.
John?
Exact same issues. They've already been answered regarding the connections and when they're, and how they're going to happen.
Stacy? Okay.
Just while we're talking about connectivity, I'd point out, we are planning to stop the sidewalk at the last driveway before you get to Mount Vernon's, because right now there's nothing on Mount Vernon to connect it into, and that'll be, that gap will be filled with the Mount Vernon project.
Right. Thank you. Is everybody okay with consent for this? Okay, so Sharon, this can be on consent next time. Thank you. Michael, all right, we're on to public comment. Seeing no public here. Ginger, can you check online, please?
Yes, I do show, I apologize, Verada. Be able to turn on your video.
I'm not. Oh, I, I don't see her. Oh, you do?
Yeah. Yes. Ms. Mayor and the city council people.
We can hear you. There you go.
Okay. I had this question about the property at Old Austin School. I was looking at the plans, and I would really feel that a community place with the intergenerational activity would be nice to have. But then there was more emphasis for the parks and all that, so I just wanted some feedback into that. Thank you.
Thank you. So, under Georgia law, we can't engage on a two-way conversations at our meetings, but if you'll email us at councilmembers at dunwoodyga.gov, we can have a discussion that way. So please email us at councilmembers@dunwoodyga.gov. Ginger?
If anyone else would like to speak in public comment, please raise your hand in this map. I see no other hands raised at this time.
Thank you. All right. City manager comments. And while Eric is queuing up, we're going to make a change to this moving forward, correct, Eric?
That, that's correct.
We're going to do this monthly and as a presentation, so it'll be in your agenda packet ahead of time. Let me know, Council, if you have any challenges with that. As we leave, as, as we leave the pandemic, maybe and get back to sort of more normal operations, we're going to have the, once a month, so just let me know if you have any problems with that.
Yeah, and, and that's right, Mayor, and thank you for, for bringing, bringing that up. One thing we started, I started doing these back when, when the pandemic started, and then we've kind of enhanced them a little bit, a little bit more each month, and you go into a more format, a more formatted report, and part of the goal is to keep everybody informed, not only the council, but also the public in terms of where we are. The report is it does, hopefully it does everything y'all want to do. If not, please let the mayor know, and we'll make the adjustments, or let me know as well. And, but it's very concise, you know, we try to keep it to about 15 pages or less, so it has information that y'all can use. So having said that, Public Works, the Pilar Road sidewalk continues to move along, as well as the Tilly Mill Road sidewalk. On that sidewalk, it's about all stormwater drain pipe has been complete, and about 75% of the sidewalk is complete. The Spaulding at Shammly-Dunwoody intersection continues to make great progress. Last week, we worked on the curb along the Shammly-Dunwoody portion of the road. We got a lot of the sidewalk complete on the Spaulding portion of the road, very smooth project so far. The paving has begun. Blunt construction has paved eight streets so far this year. So that is, that's already started. And also, our quarterly street sweeping was complete on April 16th. And of course, as y'all know, that doesn't, does not include every road in the city, includes the more, the highlighted roads, and that's a program that's very popular, and we wish to expand that in the future as funds allow. The, the police department continue to work on this distracted driving detail. Ashford-Dunwoody Road was the target at the last time with 17 citations issued for hands-free violations. As you read into the report tonight, you'll see more and more about the license plate readers and how they've worked along with our K-9 to keep everybody safe. And also with felony hits for vehicles and things of that nature. As you read that report, I can't say enough good things about the cameras and how they're helping our police officers through technology. The Parks Department, we've created a separate Parks calendar on the website to include events and programming offered by both Dunwoody Parks Recreation and our park partners. Also, the Austin School demolition is just about complete, with the hydro seeding going out and punch list items remaining for the final portions of the cleanup of that site. On, later in the month, Saturday, May the 15th, King of Pops giveaway is scheduled for Brook Run Park to celebrate kids to the Park Day, and the staff will be handing out the pops from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. near the front field and playground. Community Development had 241 building inspections over the past two weeks, 66 new permits issued. The Planning Commission also heard the side ordinance rewrite on April the 13th and tabled it until May the 11th. No one spoke against it at the public hearing, they just wanted more time to work on that. Also, you know, based on tonight's meeting, on the community development side of things, I want to be sure I can get with get with the council members. I think that the PD development that we're looking at in our zoning category is an excellent category. I'm here to assist. As y'all know, that was my primary background in any force, in any way to answering questions on that zoning. And there are several different ways we can look at it. So I'll be reaching out to y'all between now and the next meeting and discuss that in more detail. The economic development, the URA has released the qualifications for the commercial site, the 2.5 acre site as part of the project Renaissance. I've mentioned that in the past. I just want to keep that information out there from anybody from the public who hasn't heard it before to understand that that property is still for sale for the appropriate development. Web communications, our website work continues to focus on keeping the public aware, vaccine awareness as well. And also our press releases are all highlighted within that, within that portion of our site. The final thing I'll note tonight is our finance. And also municipal court finance has, our auditors are working remotely on the year-end audit. That's going well. It's a little different way for us this time because it's completely remote. As opposed to them being in the office, the quality will just still be extremely high. No worries there, especially the fact that we have our internal auditor to check on things, but it's just a unique way to do it during the final days, hopefully of the pandemic. And also the municipal court, 72 cases were, were disposed at the, within the last two weeks, 23 cases were reset. We also have our big amnesty program coming open in May. And we've mailed out our 2019 failures to appear for the people who have not been before. The judge or did not become before the court, they can have an amnesty relief and they can come out and not get pulled over one day and have a bench warrant to pull them in at the most inconvenient time. So we want to encourage everybody, if they have an issue, to pay it now. And this is an excellent way to do it. Glad to answer any questions. The staff's on as well. Mayor, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Any questions for Eric?
I have a quick question.
Okay.
It's actually more for Brett. With Austin, with the hydro seating, what's the ETA on the fences coming down and the public being able to access that green space?
So I think.
And the playgrounds too, for that matter.
Right. I, I don't see Brett on the line.
He's on, he's, he's got his hand up. Ginger, can you let him answer, please?
Okay, he's moving over. I'm sorry.
No problem.
Okay. Can you guys hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. So the, we'll leave the fence up for probably a couple more weeks, just to make sure that the hydro seat takes before anybody can get on the fields out there. So I'll make sure we get grass established. And we have to do that as part of our road control plan also. So I expect the fences to probably come down in a couple of weeks, depending on how quick that grass can take.
And then once it's down, does, do the playgrounds go into your daily cleaning of all the playgrounds at Dunwoody?
Yes, they do. We're going to do a deep clean on those to make sure they're all ready for the public before we take the fences down. And put down some new safety mulch and get them up to speed before we open it up to the public.
Great. Thank you, Brent. Appreciate it.
Sure. No problem.
Anyone else questions now? Oh, Joe, okay, sorry.
Thanks. Thanks for adding the report to the agenda. That gives us a little more head time, heads up notice to read your council report, your report, Eric. And it's more of a public record as well for the public to see what's going on. Really great, the transparency that we have here. Running on all cylinders. I do appreciate the format where you show up, upcoming activities. It's kind of under other highlights. So I'm reading really quickly. I'm, I just kind of glance. I like to know, it's, it's good to know, right? What's coming up? Whether it's a project or an event, what our staff is working on. I think it's great. And just, yeah, thank you.
I think Richard's still on. Do we know when the recycling event is?
No, the RSPs are out. And we picked the the e-recycling thing and it's in June, I believe, but I'll get the exact date. The other one has, has not been determined yet.
And which is the one in June? You faded out.
The e-recycling.
Oh, electronic. And the other is going to be hazardous waste?
Yeah.
Okay.
It'll be held here at City Hall.
Okay. All right. Anybody else? Okay. Council comments. Tom. Joe. John. John, go ahead.
Grogan on today? Is he in the audience?
Grogan is here.
Okay. I just wanted to talk about police matters. I just wanted to make sure who I'm talking to. As a couple of people just mentioned, it seems like we're getting back to normal. You know, we're getting back into the everyday swing of things and that's a good thing and that's a bad thing. And I know it's a great thing because we're getting our life together. The bad thing is that the old problems are returning. And I've seen an uptick in complaints regarding school safety, school speeding in zones. This council, we passed a ordinance which put radar speed detection in our schools. Unfortunately, there was a requirement in the ordinance that was passed that was part of state law that allowed us to do our section of it, that we needed DeKalb County or it was either the DeKalb County government or the school system to approve our application to put in speed enforcement in our own city and our school zones. The Georgia Legislature identified this as a problem because again, we can't do this speed enforcement without DeKalb County's assistance or the school system's assistance. All they need to do is sign off on it. But so far they have not done so. But the state legislature put in HB 248. And it's passed the House this year, but it did not pass the Senate, the governor. So right now we still have a limited control, we're missing a tool for speed enforcement in our school zones. And.
Go ahead, John.
I was just hoping the chief Grogan could try to figure out what we can do for better enforcement in their schools. And what can we do to get the Cab County, the government or school system? I forget which one it was.
It's the school system. And I've been working on that, but chief, why don't you talk about what you're going to talk about first?
I just, I'd love to get an update because I, I would love to get those cameras in. We were ready to roll on it, but we're waiting for approvals from others that you would hope have the same, you know, wishes and desires.
Sure, John. I'd, I'd be happy to address that. So the mayor reached out to the superintendent of the school system and got a point of contact from me. I made, which is the, I think her chief of staff. I made contact with him and we have a meeting set up next week here at our offices. Where we're going to talk about this important issues. I've, I've stressed our concern and our interest in expediting that matter since it's been quite some time. Uh, you know, as a safety issue for the schools and for the children. And so we're going to have that meeting coming up next week and I should know something more after that.
Well, I, I appreciate that. Please, I hope that meeting goes well. This topic's close to my heart and I know you, we've been doing the distracted drivers for a lot of reasons and that's important too. But if there's any way in which we could step up just the enforcement, some enforcement around the schools, just to make sure that our citizens know that it's a priority to us and our police department and our city. It would be appreciated.
Absolutely.
Thank you. So I appreciate it.
And, and on social media today, right as the meeting was started, I was tagged in a post about the difficulty of the North Peachtree Tilly Mill intersection and crossings. And I'll send you an email to follow up with that, but it's the same thing where people are just ignoring, I guess, the signals, drivers and kids on bikes and kids walking from the middle school. And I'm not sure the cameras can go that far. I don't know if we know, like, I think that's past the school zone. So, and there, just because somebody said it in the comments, there's, that's the only kind of cameras that are allowed in Georgia, right?
Correct.
Is the school zones.
Automated speed enforcement.
Automatics, right.
In schools.
Only in school zones. Okay. Thank you.
Lynn, can I? It's Stacy.
Stacy, go ahead.
I just, you know, as we return to a little bit of normalcy, I just want to wish good luck to all the Dunwoody High School spring teams who have made the state playoffs. I know the girls tennis is there. Girls and boys soccer made state playoffs, lacrosse, baseball. We sent a gymnast to the state. So good luck to all of our teams.
Thank you, Stacy.
Oh, track and field. I forgot track and field.
Track and field. Good. Anybody else? No, just drive carefully, please. It's a lot of times we think it's people from outside of Dunwoody and a lot of times it's not. Go ahead, Jim. And so with that.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Moved by Jim, second by Joe. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Sharon, that passes unanimously. Thank you all and good night.